Call to order our meeting, September the 8th. Will stand and let's say our pledges for allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good, and then tonight, we're going to have our invocation. Scott Oxford, pastor of the St. James Episcopal Church.
Thank you. Let us pray. Oh God, by whom the meek are guided in judgment and light rises up in darkness for the godly, be with this board of aldermen elected by the people of this community and grant them in all their deliberations the awareness and concern for discerning the common good, as well as the grace to ask what you would have them to do, that the spirit of wisdom may serve them from all false choices, and that in your light they may see light and in your straight path may not stumble through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Well, first, I'm going to start off by saying that we just returned from town square where we had the dedication and was presented the key to the new town square, of which I will then give this to the town manager and let him entrust it over there. But it was a wonderful ceremony. It's just a true sense of community when you see what that has been accomplished there. There's so many people that are involved in that. But I will hearken back to the one thing, and that is leadership. And I think that the actions that a particular board member had in 2008 exemplifies leadership. And that is, this is back in the days when this town square was nothing more than an idea from Richard Hudson and several other people. But he wanted to go ahead and propose this. He did. Caught the ear of Chuck McGowan, who was a board member then. Unfortunately, we were in the time of the greatest recession since the depression, and so it was not exactly the best time in the world to be purchasing land. But Chuck always hearkened back to the saying of Will Rogers, better invest in land than making more of it. So, we invested in the land that we had sold and bought more land, and now we have this park. So, I think that, I think everybody on this, on this board and everybody in the town should be very, very pleased with what, with what we have. I'd like to make a couple little announcements here. We have a Mr. Jerry Miller, and some of you may have seen this in the paper, but a Mr. Jerry Miller wrote in and was talking about how he had a problem with his car at the Pizza Hut. The police department assisted him getting a tow truck in. The tow truck took a while to get there. They left to go on another call, came back. So, I just, it's very, very heartwarming to read something like this in the paper. So, chief, good job. There was also another article in the paper, and this was on the page with that, the Black Mountain Savings alone has a lot of pictures of, and tells little stories. I'm very, I wish that Wendell had gone ahead and had said something a little bit more about this, because it was a picture of my aunt. This is my Aunt Lulu Lindsay, who was a teacher at the Black Mountain Primary School, I mean, elementary school for over forty years. Also in that is a picture of a bus, and it shows the kids, and that's what she did for years, was to, she would take these kids every year on one of, to one of four places and alternate. They'd either go to Carolina State, Wake Forest, or Duke, and then they would go to the beach, or they would go to the beach first and come back. She would take them into, into different classes. She would have talked to the professors. I mean, a lot of these kids, it's the first time they've been out of Buncombe County, much less going to the beach, and must even more so to go to a big university. So, I, um, thank you, Aunt Lulu. And also the former mayor of Black Mountain, my brother Tom Sobel, that was his aunt too. She did a wonderful, wonderful job of teaching.
And mayor, may I also add, she was my seventh grade teacher, so I remember her very well.
My eighth grade teacher.
Really?
She was a fine, fine lady. We have some announcements. We got David and Jennifer Bilstrom on Cycle to Farm, and they're going to make a little presentation here.
It will be adjusted for you. Okay. Advice for everybody else, don't touch the microphone.
My name is Jennifer Bilstrom, and I am the owner of Velo Girl Rides and the creator of Cycle to Farm. This is my husband, David Bilstrom. He is a coach for Velo Girl Rides, and he is the safety director for the event. I want to thank the mayor for inviting us to give the final results of the Black Mountain event here tonight. So, you might not know what Cycle to Farm is. Cycle to Farm is a charity benefit bicycle ride where cyclists cover sixty-two miles visiting local farms along the way. At the farm, the farmer gives a sample of whatever their product is, and the cyclists are invited to make purchases. Volunteers bring all those purchases back to the, to the fabulous after-party, which is open to all the volunteers and the riders. This year, we offered four different Cycle to Farm events in different communities. Three have already occurred, and the last one will be held in the Sandy Mush Community out near Lester in October. This was the third annual Cycle to Farm in Black Mountain, and this picture that you're looking at right now is a group of cyclists who traveled from Virginia to participate in the event and rode the entire thing despite the rain. We had two-hundred-and-fifty riders who registered, seventy-seven volunteers, sixteen sponsors, and ten government agencies. The event is all about promoting local farms. We had six farms that participated this year in the event. We don't charge them an entrance fee. They are required to provide samples free of charge to all the participants. And many of the farmers really get excited about the event. They offer live music, sometimes they have flowers in their display, and wood fire pizza was a new benefit this year. So, we have a variety of sponsors that help us make this event possible, and the sponsors share a desire to reach out to a market of people who are both foodies and athletes, and they are committed to supporting and enhancing Greenways. I should say that this is the third year that New Belgium has made a significant financial contribution as a sponsor. They've been with us since the very first year. So, what does this mean to the town of Black Mountain? We had nearly a sixty thousand dollar economic impact this year, and that's based on not only what the riders spend at the farms, but what they spend when they're visiting the town. More than fifty percent of them stay overnight. And they travel. This family that you're looking at here traveled from, the youngest members from Charlotte, North Carolina, and the parents came from Colorado. This is the second year they have gathered in Black Mountain for this event, and they plan to do it in the future. We have visitors from sixteen different states, and each year we've had at least one person from a different country. People are coming from all over to visit here, and as I said, fifty, fifty-seven percent stayed overnight, forty-one percent are from western North Carolina. So, the age demographics for this event are typical of a big cycling event, with the biggest segments being from the forty to sixty-year-old segment. What's different about Cycle to Farm is that fifty percent of the riders are female. That's very different in the cycling community. There's an event in Brevard called the Assault on the Carolinas. They've been around for fourteen years. They have over a thousand riders, and this year they bragged that they had twenty-five percent female, which is, is a meaningful number. But Cycle to Farm appeals to a different crowd of riders. So, how do we get the word out? As you can see from this pie chart, word of mouth really rules for cycling events. We saw forty-five percent of the people learned about the event from friends and family and thirty-nine percent from social media outlets like email, website, Facebook, that sort of thing. The riders come because of the reputation of this ride, and the town is really a part of that success. We had ten first responder agencies that helped out. We could not do it without the support of our local governments. And Black Mountain Public Service and Parks and Recreation played a key role in helping us pull together the event. I'd like to thank specifically Jamie Matthews, Jill Edwards, and Casey Connor, and the entire Greenways Commission for supporting the event and helping us find volunteers. We have wonderful volunteers, and boy, do the people remember that. So, the event has provided just short of eight thousand dollars in cash for the Greenways over the three-year life of the event. I want to point out that this picture is one of our group rides along the Flat Creek Trail. And all of these people, the day we took this ride, I told them about the NCDOT Bicycle Planning Grant that the town has won, and they all wanted to be involved in some way in helping in that effort. So, the volunteers had come out in the rain. Cyclists train in the rain, but I told them at the start, volunteers don't, so please say thank you as you ride along. The public may not realize that it takes, it takes a lot of dedicated volunteers to pull off an event like this, and our volunteers are hardworking and very friendly. And the work begins way before the event. In this picture, you'll see the mayor's helping us put up a tent that saved the day. We did not have a, a very big tent for the musical talent, and so at the last minute, we, we put up the circus tent that you saw at the dedication earlier today, and it kept the music, musicians dry. To put it into perspective, we have about one volunteer per every four riders. And so, we had seventy-seven total volunteers, forty-three of which aren't even from Black Mountain. Some of them travel from other cities just to be a part of the event. The riders, I'm, I'm sorry, the volunteers, we should note, are just as relevant as a potential customer for small business in Black Mountain as the riders are. So, we've, we've been fortunate to have some good media attention, especially Bicycling Magazine, which is the most popular magazine for cycling enthusiasts. We were surprised in June when they called and wanted to feature Black, the Black Mountain Event as a recommended ride for July. And then, in the very first year of Cycle to Farm, NC Weekend filmed, and that's what you see in this picture, and then they produced a little film that they showed just before the second year event. We still meet riders today who said that that's how they heard about the event. We, this year, we're named number one bicycle event in WNC, and that's against pretty stiff competition from much older and well-run rides, so we're very proud of that. Many different media outlets ran stories, including the Black Mountain News, and we used TripAdvisor to gather reviews that help us get the word out about the event. So, so far, I've been talking about Cycle to Farm, but I want to tell you a little bit about Velo Girl Rides, which is a bicycle touring company that I have chosen to base right here in this town. David and I are committed to supporting cycling in this community, and you may not know that over the past eighteen months, we've led ninety-two bicycle rides right here in Black Mountain. And we do this to provide a safe and supportive way for people to enjoy the sport. The majority of the rides are free of charge. You may see us on Saturday mornings as we go past, past the tailgate market, and we also have a, a ride that's open to the public on Wednesdays. Both of those now originate and end at the Town Square Park. We have, we have counted three-hundred-and-ninety-two rides taken by Black Mountain residents in, in these group rides. And we also know of two homes that have been purchased from people who learned of Black Mountain through Cycle to Farm. We have a great time on these rides, so if you would like to get out and try it, you're welcome to come and join us at any time. So, the future for cycling in Black Mountain is really very bright. There is a second major cycling event coming in November. It's called the Book Walter Venge, and it's a charity race. It's offered by two professional bike riders who live in, in Asheville when they're not traveling the world racing, but they picked Black Mountain for their event. David and I, along with some other community members, are helping them because it's a first-year event. They need, they need quite a bit of help and a lot of volunteers, and we're really excited about that because it's really putting Black Mountain on the map for cycling. So, what's next for Cycle to Farm? We make decisions about what we're going to do in the upcoming year in December, and this is, it's a tough time for us because we get an inquiry from a new community about once a week, and that stretches all the way to California. The most notable inquiry that's come in to date is from Farm Aid. They've asked us to produce a Cycle to Farm for their event next year. But I want to assure you that we will continue to offer our training rides and be focused on the tour business, which is also going to bring economic impact to this town. In summary, Black Mountain is a cycle, a cycling destination, and this ride that's coming in November, one of the top cyclists in the world. He competed as a team leader for BMC in the Tour de France in July, and he's going to ride here in Black Mountain, and that's a pretty big deal. Why did they choose Black Mountain? Why do we choose to live here? It's because the cycling routes are beautiful and challenging. We have great food and music and lodging, and it's a very charming setting for a ride. Cycle to Farm is proof of this, with nearly two-hundred-thousand dollars economic impact in three years, and we feel confident that our tours will bring more dollars into the economy. Studies show that thirty percent more is spent by travelers when visiting for the purpose of a cycle, cycling tour. So, in conclusion, I urge you to really embrace this because we are going to see ourselves become more and more a cycling destination, and we need to focus really strongly on the infrastructure, the Greenways, that will make us an attractive place for, for cyclists, both for visitors, for new residents, and for new businesses. Thank you. And do you have any questions of need? If not, David has a little gift we're going to give to each of you. This is the bag that the riders get. It's usually stuffed with sponsor goodies, and as you can see on the front, there's a list of all the farms and on the back, all the sponsors.
And I'm assuming then that you've got just a webpage to go to?
Yes, and there's some information inside the bag that would lead you to the website.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Now, we've got citizens' comments. Blake Madden.
I live at 202 Ninth Street. I'm here alone. I'm speaking for myself. In fact, none of my family knows that I'm here. Part one. I want to share some good news with you guys, that one of the businesses from the town of Black Mountain has recently received numerous awards in the highly coveted 2014 Mountain Express WMC Best of Awards, and in fact, just received the Hall of Fame status for their consistent winnings over the years. Source for Well-Being that was created about fourteen years ago in this town won first place in Best Alternative Healing Center in all of western North Carolina, based on Reader's Poll of the Mountain Express, which has a print circulation of twenty-nine thousand. You could consider that a feather in the town's cap. Second place acupunctureist category in all of western North Carolina went to Whitney Madden of Source. Third place chiropractor category in all of western North Carolina went to Renee Graziano, excuse me, formerly of Source. Now, there are also regional awards that not, that only Swananoa and Black Mountain residents vote on. Regionally, Source received a second place tie for most innovative business and third place for a business that gives back to the community. This is the legacy that Source leaves literally with this town. Not to leave you out, you all were recognized too. First place, local government accomplishment, good day for this, Town Square, and I congratulate you on it. Unfortunately, it's a little bittersweet because you also won second place in the local government failure category, so I guess it's a little bit controversial. I don't agree. I think it's a good thing, and I applaud you for it. But your first place win in the local government failure category went to the moving of Source for Well-Being to a new location in Asheville. So, this is the legacy of Source for Well-Being, and I wonder what you all will be remembered I hope your families are all well. I hope your businesses are all running fantastically, and you're really successful, or really, each and every one of you. I hope it's going well for you right now. So, may we all enjoy the bounty of our rewards.
Thank you. Next, Alan Green.
Alan Green, 335 Lookout Terrace. Okay, we still have the lights, all right. Been a while since I've been here. You all are doing a fantastic job. Not a lot of issues for me to come up here and discuss, but I do still have a concern. When I heard the dedication of the Town Square and all, I felt compelled that I needed to come and I needed to speak about the tax dollars and the Town Square. We've got the park. If you all remember, controversy that ensued back when the town park was first, you know, brought about, and a lot of, a lot of people would not stand up. I remember that we had a, I call it a faux-sixties city and, and all of that too, with everybody with their demonstrations and all. But my concern is the tax dollars going to be used for the Town Square itself. You know, what are the annual costs as far as insurance, maintenance and repair, utilities, water, and all? This town has a lot of Greenways. This town has some beautiful parks. Now, the Town Square Park is, it's beautiful. I will hand you that. And there was a lot of work put into that Town Square Park. My issue too is the consensus that I was told, and many of the taxpayers were told, that town dollars, taxpayer dollars, would not be used for the Town Square. But it has. It already has, and now we're going to take care of the upkeep of that. You know, we're still in an economic crunch. When you step back and you look at everybody that's wanting a piece of our pie, our monies, when you look at what the federal government's asking for, when you look at what this county is asking for, what the state is asking for, and I know, we were, we were neutral in our revenue. And we have great workers here with, with the town putting in their own utilities and doing the roadwork that's been doing right now. That is saving us some money. But somewhere along the line, taxpayers are going to have to foot this bill. All I'm here for is board of aldermen. I've got respect for each and every one of you sitting up here. All I want is to keep you honest. We're not idiots out here. There's still people watching, and just because they don't raise a fuss doesn't mean that there's not concerns. Please keep your ear to us, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alan. Marilyn Sabansky.
Rainbow Recycling, and this is just a friendly reminder that the Hard to Recycle Collection is coming back to this end of the county this Saturday, ten to two, at the Ace Hardware Parking Lot there in Swananoa. So, this is your opportunity to recycle things like electronics, batteries and cartridges, metals, appliances, bicycles, styrofoam, books and cardboard, pet items, and used cooking oil. There's a flyer available in the chamber, in the library. I posted them around town. It's downloadable from www.AshvilleGreenworks.org, and if you have any questions, it's pretty clear what is accepted. If you've got some item and you thought, well, it's not there, and would they, contact the vendor. The phone number's on the right-hand side. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Marilyn. Carrie Turner, please.
Good evening. My name's Carrie Turner. I'm the Southern States Coordinator with the Safe Routes to School National Partnership, and I reside in Asheville, North Carolina. But I'm here tonight to speak about Consent Agenda Item B regarding a Complete Streets Resolution for the town. As I said, I'm the Southern States Coordinator with the Safe Routes to School National Partnership. The National Partnership's mission is to advance safe walking and bicycling to and from schools and in daily life to improve the health and well-being of America's children and to foster the creation of livable, sustainable communities. We are a national nonprofit organization with a network of more than six-hundred-and-fifty partner organizations, working to improve quality of life for kids and communities by promoting active, healthy lifestyles and safe infrastructure that supports bicycling and walking. In North Carolina, over a dozen state and local organizations, schools, professional planning and engineering organizations, and businesses are network members. I'm here this evening to voice my organization's support for your passage of a Complete Streets Resolution for the town of Black Mountain. As you're probably aware, Complete Streets are designed and operated to enable safe, attractive, and comfortable access and travel for all users of all ages and abilities. Complete Streets improve quality of life, help promote healthy, active living, and as we heard about the Cycle to Farm event, they also make economic sense. Visitors and residents want communities that have safe transportation options and that are walkable and bikeable. And Complete Streets also make it easier for children and their families to walk and by school to school, so they are a key component in developing safe routes to school. Complete Streets will also help the town of Black Mountain meet many of the goals and vision statements set forth in your existing plans, such as those set forth in the 2014 Comprehensive Plan Update. The Plan Update envisions the town future, the town's future as follows, and I quote, "We see Black Mountain as one of the most walkable communities in the region. We see the entire community, from school-aged children to senior citizens, out walking in the normal course of each day's activities. Sidewalks border nearly every street and are connected to a community-wide network of trails, walking paths, and bikeways," end quote. By adopting a Complete Streets Resolution today, the town of, the town board reaffirms its commitment to this vision and moves the town of Black Mountain closer to realizing the future you have envisioned. Thank you for the opportunity to come. Thank you for the opportunity to comment and for your commitment to making the town of Black Mountain's streets complete. The National Partnership staff is happy to offer our assistance as you move forward in this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie White.
Julie White, 205 Ninth Street. And I'm here for two reasons. One is to thank the board for their support during the whole Town Square process. It was a delight to be there today, and it made me feel very good to be a part of that. It's a good project we should all be proud of. And the other reason I came is because I wanted to express my thanks to David and Jen Bilstrom for their work with Cycle to Farm and all they do with the community. Their event helps the Black Mountain Greenway Commission not only monetarily, but also by bringing more awareness to the greenways. We have plans right now to start installing wayfinding signs on our greenways. And part of the money that they raise will go toward that. So it's very, we're very thankful. But not only Cycle to Farm, but they really have done a lot to improve the whole cycling community in Black Mountain. And for all the reasons that they just said, the economic benefits, the health benefits. People come to this town to cycle, and a lot of that is due to the fact that they are promoting cycling. And they do a lot else for their community. I am going to quote, I may do this wrong, so David, tell me. So one of the benches in the Town Square says, "While you rest your legs, fellow girl rides." Thank you. And oh, I also support Complete Streets.
Thank you, Julie. Elaine Lutzenheiser.
Yes, for now.
Daniella Zink.
I apologize. I should have assigned N. I. Issues in the Public Hearing in Washington.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bill Chilton.
I think I'm going to have the same thing on number nine.
Okay. Alright, very good. Well, that concludes the first citizen comment. I overlooked a resolution, a proclamation, excuse me. Proclamation, September 11th, a Day of Service and Remembrance. Whereas on September 11th, 2001, terrorists attacked America causing great loss of innocent US life and tremendous damage. Whereas the events of that day instantly transformed countless American lives due to personal loss through an unfamiliar sense of individual and natural vulnerability. Whereas in the aftermath of these horrendous events, the American people demonstrated they were stronger than ever, responding with tremendous outpouring of revitalized patriotism, service, goodwill, and finding the strength to recover and rebuild. Whereas we pay tribute to the selfless heroes and innocent victims of September 11th, 2001, we reaffirm the spirit of patriotism, service, unity that we felt in those days that followed. Whereas Congress has designated September 11th of each year's as Patriot Day and recognize the observance of September 11th as annually recognized natural day of service and remembrance. It resulted, I C. Michael Sobin, the Board of Alderman, proclaimed September 8th, 2014, as 9/11 Natural Day of Service and Remembrance. And the town of Black Mountain urges our citizens to recognize the heroism of the public safety and rescue workers, military service mentors, and the many volunteers who responded to those tragic events with courage, compassion, determination, and skill. And to dedicate September 11th as a day to mourn, reflect, and remember the victims and innocent lives lost as a result of the events in September 11th, 2001. And witness here of on this eighth day of September, 2014. This Land of the Sky.
Yeah, that goes along with this. We can mention it now.
Yeah. What I tried to go ahead and mention.
Okay. And I think there are some flyers out in the front lobby. But as part of the National Day of Service, Land of Sky Regional Council is conducting what they call Operation North State, a military care package drive. It's this Thursday, September 11th, from 9:00 AM to noon at Land of Sky Regional Council, which is out on Leicester Highway. And you can drop off items. And there's a list of items here that they will create care packages for the military for. And I would encourage anyone to either go to the Land of Sky's website or grab a flyer on your way out the door tonight in support of this worthy operation.
Okay. We'll move for communication. The Housing Commission Annual Report, Peter.
Tell about Stacy. Stacy's collaboration.
Excuse me. That's what we added on there. Stacy Ayers.
You almost made it out unscathed.
Yeah.
Alright, this is from the state of North Carolina, Department of Justice, North Carolina Criminal Justice Education and Training Standards Commission. To all to whom this speech presents, may come reading. Vietnam, in recognition of the attainment of training and education objectives commensurate with the role of professional criminal justice officer and a personal devotion and service to the people of North Carolina, the Attorney General, and the Chairman and the Members of the North Carolina Criminal Justice Education and Training Standards Commission. Through the authority vested in them by the state of North Carolina, do hereby award to Stacy Eugene Ayers as Advanced Law Enforcement Assistant.
Now, you're up, Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Board of Alderman. I hope you all had a chance to go over my full report in your packages. So I'm just going to hopefully summarize my report for you guys this evening. For, seems like just about the better part of the year, we have been working on revisions to our minimum housing code. The Housing Commission feels that it is very important that we sort of strengthen the town's approach towards code enforcement. And to do this, we are looking at the items that particularly pertain to health, safety, and welfare of tenants. We are hoping by making these revisions that we would propose to you in the future that we would be reducing the likelihood of loss of property, loss of life, or possible displacement of families due to accidents or inadequate ventilation or sanitary facilities. We have had some negative feedback from some landlords here in town saying that any sort of updates they would have to make towards properties would drive up rental costs. That is not our intention. We feel that there are items in the code or in the proposed amendments that good and responsible landlords will be able to make without really holding it over tenants, and especially tenants who can least afford it. As you know, the town does not currently and cannot currently require an inspection of a unit to be done in order to rent it. And a lot of times, the code enforcement is done through a complaint-driven system. So, there may be some tenants out there who are afraid to make a complaint to their landlord for fear of possibly having their rent go up or something worse, maybe even being asked to find another place to live. We would hope that we could, as a commission, work on a volunteer rental registry program in the future so that landlords and property managers would be able to ask the town for an inspection for safety and suitability, let them do it completely voluntarily, and sort of use that as a marketing tool towards tenants that say, "We have gone above and beyond the minimum housing standards, and we'd like for you guys to know that. We're providing you a safe, secure, and hopefully, energy-efficient place to rent." In addition to the amendments to the minimum housing code that we have been working on, we have also been taking time to do a little bit more research on affordable housing here in the area and what that means. Our commission member, Anna Sterns, gave us a presentation on what she called the municipal responsibility for affordable housing in Black Mountain. Ms. Stern's research cited gaps in existing federal programs, decreasing funding for public housing. And her research revealed a 41% increase in cost-burdened households in Black Mountain. And at the time of her research, there were 22 families on public housing waiting lists. Ms. Sterns also proposed that, in addition to what the town has already done to promote affordable housing, things like property tax incentives towards, to owners of affordable housing units, leveraging CBG, CDBG grants and home funding, and establishing a municipal rental assistance program. We've also invited the Director of Community Development for the City of Asheville to come and speak with us. His name is Jeff Stodenger. And Mr. Stodenger presented what he called the need for affordable housing as well as other housing programs due to the high-cost, low-wage region with an aging population, increasing energy costs, increasing building costs, and diminishing federal resources. Mr. Stodenger also described the role of the Eschville Regional Housing Consortium, which consists of a four-county area, Buncombe, Henderson, Madison, and Transylvania counties whose purpose is to draw greater resources and collaborative decision-making for the future of our region. One of the ways that the ARHC works in the area is through the Home Program, which is to assist low-income households with affordable housing. Home funds can be used towards construction, rehabilitation, acquisition of land for housing, and tenant-based rental assistance. Mr. Stodenger also reported that where, as of now, Buncombe County, one of Buncombe County's highest priorities are affordable rental housing and coordinating its development with transportation corridors, existing transportation corridors. Currently, there are three home-assisted units in Black Mountain. They are, there's Metta View Apartments, and there are subdivisions on Central Avenue and Bird Avenue. Both of those, all three of those communities have been benefited from this home funding. During the year, I also gave a presentation on community land trusts, which I felt is an interesting alternative means to affordability. CLT, Community Land Trust, can assist individuals with access to land and maintain a balance within a community by affording communities with more economic diversity. Many urban and rural areas, CLTs have been used to provide affordable housing by removing the cost of the land in the price of a home. If Black Mountain were to implement some of the procedures outlined under the CLT model, it could expand its affordable housing stock for its current and its future residents and allow for more economic diversity, and may help to protect valuable resources and provide new opportunities for recreation and community enrichment. I know that's important to a lot of folks in this town. We meet on the third Monday of every month. I'm happy to start my third year as Chair of the Housing Commission. It's exciting. And I'm hoping that we can bring our amendments to the minimum housing code to you guys very soon. We did give them over to Planning Board earlier in the year. They sent us back to a little bit of our homework. That's okay. But we'll get those to you as soon as possible. You have any questions?
Peter, if citizens have concerns about housing or some substandard housing that you're in, can they bring their concerns to the Housing Commission?
Absolutely. We would welcome citizen comments. Welcome it. I mean, they can contact, I'm sure they can get in contact with Jennifer Tipton or even Dan Cordell. They can even try to contact some of us directly on the commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Appreciate it. Thank you for your volunteering. Okay, that gets us down to the Consent Agenda. Matt.
Yes, sir. You've got the adoption of minutes from your August 7th Agenda Workshop, your regular session in August, and the closed session. Well, you've already done the closed session. Then you've got the, the resolution has been referenced earlier, committing to the Complete Streets concept. And I'll just reiterate again, as the resolution lays out, this is an effort to build upon the DOT's Complete Streets policy, recognizing the importance of addressing transportation needs of pedestrians, bicyclists, and public transportation users in the community and to incorporate that into our future planning. It's not a financial obligation. It's a policy commitment on our part. Then you have a couple of calls for public hearing. You've got a public hearing for text amendments for setbacks. This, I think the Planning Board has tried to address this with defining the setback, taking into account the eaves and overhangs for structures. You've got a public hearing for text amendments regarding automotive sales in the central business district. I think currently, we allow automotive repairs. And this is a public hearing to address automotive sales in the central business district. And then finally, you've got a proposal, as you know, the November meeting falls on Veterans Day. And so this is a proposal to change the November monthly board meeting and the agenda meeting to, walk me through this, Darlene.
November 6.
Okay, we'll move it. Okay, we'll move to November 6. Then we'll do the agenda session at 5 and the regular session at 6 on those days. And those are your consentish items.
Do you have a motion?
Sumed.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, you're passing unanimously. The next section of citizen comment before the public hearings. If anyone wishes to speak. Alright, no new business, unfinished business. Now we go, get into the public hearings. We've got four of these for tonight. The first one is a public hearing for text amendments for Board of Adjustment Changes of the Land Use Code as recommended by the Planning Board. Do I hear a motion to open up the hearing?
Sumed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright. Does anyone wish to speak from the audience to the text amendments? Does anybody on the board wish to speak to this issue?
If I could just, just to give you an idea of what it is, these are changes, again, I know that, I'm just reiterating what we've talked about in the past, but these are changes that came with the legislative session from 2013 that makes some procedural changes to how the Board of Adjustments handles appeals and variances. There's, I know that Ron has made some slight modifications, I think, just to update that that are at your place. But all of these are amendments that basically update our process to coincide with the legislative changes from last year. Is that accurate, Ron?
That's correct. The changes I noted that I put in front of you, it wasn't in your original agenda packet. The new statute says that the time for appeal from a decision of the Board of Adjustments Superior Court can either be 30 days from the effective date or 30 days to the date that the person receives an actual copy of the order. And when I came out of the Planning Board, I confused them at that meeting. And they had the wording in there that were brought from the effective date, which is the date according to the statute when the order is filed with the clerk. And I propose that we change that from the date that's actually served on personally or by mail. So it's a little more clear when their 30 days begins to run.
I don't see anybody wishing to speak to this, so I'll need to get a motion to close the public hearing.
Sumed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Now I need a motion to adopt the ordinance, O-14-08.
Sumed.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? We now need a motion to adopt a statement of consistency for text amendments.
Sumed.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
That also was unanimous. We go to the second public hearing. Public hearing for text amendments for printing operations to the Land Use Code as recommended by the Planning Board. Again, Matt, give us just a little quick. Again, Matt, get us just a little quick.
Okay. I think when the Land Use Code was amended, maybe 2010, printing operations were not included in that, and the Planning Board, with staff's recommendation too, has requested that, that printing operations are permitted by right in office and institutional, the Central Business District, Highway Business, and Light Industrial District. It's just, we've, we've always had that in our code. It was omitted, and this adds that back in just to accommodate printers.
So we get a motion then to open up the public hearing?
So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wish to speak to this issue from the audience? Anyone wish to speak to this issue from the board? I'm not seeing any. I make a motion to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Who made the motion, sir?
I think it was Ryan, wasn't it?
I believe so. I think Ryan did.
Sorry, Anna.
Now we need a motion to adopt ordinance, O-14-09.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Now we needed to adopt a statement of consistency. A motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, now we go to C., which is public hearing for text amendments for definition of a playhouse to the Land Use Code as recommended by the Planning Board. Matt?
Yeah, just briefly, that, if you'll recall, you approved the definition of a structure at your last meeting for, with a public hearing there, and one of the exemptions to that is a playhouse, and I think we've tried to be proactive and define what a playhouse is, so that not every structure that's built in Black Mountain is a playhouse and would have, and would not require building for a minute. So this is just a definition of a playhouse to, to coincide with the definition of structures so that, so that we know who gets, who requires a building for a minute for a minute.
I need to get a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Anyone from the audience wish to speak? Anyone from the board wish to speak? Not, I need to get a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Need to adopt the ordinance, O-14-10, so I need a motion.
So moved.
And, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Now to adopt a statement of consistency. I need a motion.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous also, so C. is done. Now we come to the last of the public hearing, and this is the public hearing for text amendments for home occupations to the Land Use Code.
And if you'll allow me, I'm gonna call on Josh Harrell to come up and the Planning Director to speak, just to go through that process with you briefly.
Very good.
So I guess, as you've noticed, there's been quite a few text amendments on tonight's agenda, as has been every other agenda. Since I've been here, I think part of my position has been to look through the Land Use Code and see if there have been deficiencies or things that may have been missed in the 2010 update, and that's kind of what's, kind of what's prevailed here. Under the home occupation section, currently we have A through K on conditions on home occupations, and the Planning Board has, what you've got in front of you has sent to you some changes or some additions to, to the A through K sections. Section I would add an addition that would say, it already says this, but it does add onsite. It says off-street parking needed to accommodate the home occupations shall be provided onsite, but shall not exceed four spaces. The new, the first new one is L., the use may not employ more than two persons who are not residents of the dwelling. M. was canceled out. So actually, N. would be M., not to confuse you, but only vehicles used primarily as passenger vehicles will be permitted in connection with the conduct of the home occupation. O. was struck out, so P. would change to O., and P. states home occupation housed within the dwelling shall occupy no more than 25% of the total floor area of the dwelling. Planning Board talked about this, I think, for two months. Staff had done quite a bit of research, other jurisdictions throughout the state, about 60 different jurisdictions. We polled on how they addressed home occupations. The majority of the 60 allowed one employee outside of the dwelling unit to be occupied, to be, to be employed, which was 49%. 46% was zero. They didn't allow any employees that did not live in the dwelling unit. And then 5% of those 60 allowed two people to be employed, which is what you've been presented with tonight from the Planning Board's recommendation. As far as the percentage of floor area allowed, 84% of those 60 jurisdictions were 25% or less, as we've stated. And that is the amendment in a nutshell.
You make any questions for me? If not, we'll go ahead. I need a motion to just open up the public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Do I have any folks from the audience that wish to speak to this? Please come up, give your name and address.
Good evening, Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen of the Board. My name is Bill Shelton. I live at 104th Street here in Black Mountain. Got a call late this afternoon, really wasn't aware of this, so I'm a little short on my homework, but one thing I want to express to you is my concern about home-based businesses. As a citizen here in Black Mountain, I would urge you to keep home-based businesses very small and very minimum. Those of us who live in residential districts, we appreciate the peace and the solitude that the residential zoning ordinances in our town provide us, and we do not, I don't, we don't want to have businesses next to us where you have two employees pull up and four parking spaces and business hours Monday through Friday. We go home for our peace and our refuge and our, you know, this, this is our time. Now downtown, where all the businesses are here in town, or where I believe they all should be, is getting better looking by the day, and I think that's where we need to keep businesses in Black Mountain, is in the downtown business district and not in our residential neighborhoods. So I would urge you, as you look at these, at these particulars in the zoning ordinance, please keep the home-based businesses as small as possible. You know, if someone wants to, you know, sell Mary Kay, and it's one person, and, you know, that type of thing, but to have employees pull up in a residential neighborhood every day and to have customers pull up to a business that has business hours, that's not something the citizens of Black Mountain want in their neighborhoods. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Bill. Anybody else wish to speak to this issue? Come on up.
Hi, I'm Lisa Milton, 406 West State Street. I feel that the home occupation should be considered as a conditional use, requiring permitting, inspection, and compliance. Also, the provision for termination of a home occupation and the steps that would be followed. At this point, we don't really have any kind of oversight of exactly what's going on. I feel when people buy residential property, most of the people are buying it as their home where they come to after work, or on the days that they're off from work, they want to have a residential nature, not a residential/business nature in their neighborhood. By putting a process in place where essentially a permitting process, it would, it would provide the residential property owners the rights to know exactly what's proposed to come into the neighborhood beside them. It would also give them a forum to have their concerns given adequate consideration before the process, not afterwards. The code states that home occupations should not alter the residential character and appearance of the home and of the neighborhood. Zoning serves in a large part to protect the investment that we make in our community. Without adequate, clearly defined laws, property owners risk the erosion of their most valuable assets. To allow a home business to employ up to two individuals that do not reside within the home has the potential to dramatically change the residential nature of the neighborhood. For example, if a home occupation is a hair salon, and the husband and wife are both stylists, and they're allowed to employ two additional employees, at that point, you have four employees operating out of a home-based business in a residential neighborhood. Each of those employees has the potential to possibly have two clients per hour come to them. That's eight clients in one hour. In an eight-hour day, that's 64 people, possibly 64 cars, coming to a residential neighbor, neighborhood. I don't think any of us, as a homeowner, would want that volume of traffic, that volume of noise in a residential neighborhood. It changes the scope and the character of our neighborhood dramatically. I don't feel that in the limiting of a home occupation simply to 25% is totally adequate. Many cities stipulate that 25% of a residence, or 500 square feet, whichever is smaller, is, is the amount of land, the amount of, of use of the home occupation, of the, the residence that can be used as a home occupation. This would put a better limit in a residential neighborhood. If you have a home-based business operating in a, in a neighborhood, in a house that has 600 square feet, say it's a two-story house with a basement, and you add all the square feet up, 25% of that 6,000-square-foot residence is essentially 1,500 square feet. That's larger than many of the commercial businesses that operate now within the commercial district of our town. You begin to bring in a large volume of people in a neighborhood when you don't have very strict limitations on what you allow to go on, and especially when you consider that many people are coming here, they like their neighborhoods, they like the walking nature of it, they like the safety, they feel their children can play in a neighborhood, and when you infuse that level of business into a neighborhood, you dramatically change what these people came here, purchased, and expected the zoning laws to provide for them. I think that also there's no provision to address specialty services such as a dance class, music classes, craft classes. You could have a, a dance studio that had 13 students come into it for dance lessons. Those students oftentimes are young children whose parents drive them. There's 13 cars coming into a neighborhood. No one has the, at least I don't know of any of the residences in town that have the ability to park those cars without infringing in the nature of the neighborhood, and I think that to not have a much more stricter regulation, clearly defined, and a, and a process for both sides to be heard, I think that we stand to have more problems like we've had in the past, and that's unfair to any of the citizens, no matter which side they're on. I appreciate your time and consideration, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa. Anybody else wish to speak?
I'm Cheryl Milton, 202 Mountain Street. I'm the unprepared Milton sister. The first thing that I look at when I look down through the thing, I do not see still where it says that the person who is doing the home occupation has to reside in the household, unless I missed in what I read right there, that's not listed, and that became a big factor in the thing that we've just been through. So to me, that's something that absolutely has to be put in it. When you look at, you say you have two employees, well, if you have two employees and, and you have three or four people who live in the house that actually work there as well, at that point, to me, if you have a need for extraneous employees, you have a need to be down in our commercial section because you are allowing then people to take away from our commercial tax base. The commercial tax base, as we've talked about previously, is a much higher tax base than what the residential is. So you're looking at, people are able to, if you've got two employees and, and there's two or three of you in the house, or even there's just one of you, if your house is not, if, if you cannot provide whatever it is that you're doing as a home occupation yourself or within your own family, then in my mind, it's time for you to go into the commercial district, like, there are many businesses here in Black Mountain that have one or two employees, they aren't, they aren't doing it out of their house, they're doing it specifically out of the commercial district. You look at, like Lisa said, the influx of, of traffic in and out and different things like that, that becomes a big problem. You, you know, the, the idea of each of us purchased our homes, whatever price you paid for your house, if you didn't purchase it with the idea that you had a tremendous amount of, of traffic coming and going, once you look towards selling that, and if you say, if you have three different businesses within your neighborhood, that then becomes a, a pretty heavily-traveled neighborhood that then people suddenly are no longer thinking of it as a neighborhood. The one thing that I would say that I looked at within the information talked about, that you could not have a, a truck or a vehicle there that advertised it, well, then, and I'm not for that aspect, because if you are a, if you work for a commercial entity and you drive in a vehicle home that has that on it, then you're discriminating against the man who you are allowing to have a home-based business, but he cannot take his vehi, he cannot have a vehicle for that business. So are you going to say then that no one, as far as, as any employees, can drive a commercial vehicle home? We don't live in a coveted, Black Mountain's not a coveted neighborhood as such. So I think that we have a problem then with that aspect of things, because you are saying that you can't do something, that your neighbor, you can't have a vehicle with anything on it that your neighbor can have, possibly your neighbor's self-employed, but he doesn't, his business is not within that neighborhood. So you are limiting something there. I think that's something that needs to have a second look at. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak to this?
I'm Blake Madden, 202 Ninth Street. Got a little experience with this issue. I just want to say, I'm kind of confused. I mean, I, there's a good old boy saying that says, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it," and I thought the one we had was fine. It was pretty crystal clear, you know? All you needed was a dictionary to figure it out. Wasn't that the deal? So now, now it's been called vague, and there are deficiencies and things missed, and I agree. I agree wholeheartedly, and, and I understand these folks getting up and having concerns about the way you're rewriting it, because you're gonna have a really hard time writing it and being able to enforce it. What you have is, is not working. What you have needs to be enforced and interpreted by the people that work here. And so if you get something else in here that's written a little bit differently, that's great, you can address everyone's concerns, you can try and make everybody happy, but if the people you hire to administer can't interpret the code, you're gonna be right back in the same position. Right? You need whatever you come up with, if a citizen goes in and asks somebody that you hired, "Can I do this?" And they say, "Yes," you need that to be the answer. It doesn't matter what you put down here. It matters, but once it's said and done, this is a whole nother issue that you're dancing around and you're not worrying about, and you never took it up before. Maybe it needs to be, they have to sit down with Matt and see if it's okay with him, because if the zoning administrator says one thing and he says another, that's not gonna fly. Doesn't matter what you write in the code. You have a big loophole, you have a big hole in the way it's written, yes, it's vague, there are deficiencies, there are things missed. I'm glad to hear that now, because I've never heard that before, not, not from over here. So that's excellent. The next step is, once you come to the agreement, you need to train the people that are going to enforce it as to how to do that, how to advise the citizens. When each word in there, someone can interpret it different, when a playhouse can be one thing to one person and one thing to another. Okay? I don't want to go over my time, and I appreciate the comments you folks made. All right? Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes?
Can I go a separate note?
Absolutely. This is a separate issue. This is a separate issue.
Alan Green, 335 Lookout Terrace. I wasn't prepared to come and, and basically speak on this, but I've heard some things that's kinda opened up my mind a little bit. I'm a musician, I'm a farmer, but that's not my primary occupation. So am I technically a home business? So when I, I, I hear what is, what is said here, to me, a home business is always being the homeowner, and that's it. But I hear here people talking about two employees and, and all of that. So I guess in a way, um, I'm confused, kinda like what, what you had said here, I don't understand what the code is. Am I in, you know, am I in default here because of some, of some reason? It's just me? I don't have music lessons at my house, I go out and play somewhere, you know, and I pay taxes on that money. But as far as, um, where am I gonna, where do I find if I'm in compliance here with, with, with my home business? I'm confused, I'm sure there's a lot of other people confused out here about this issue, but no, I hear what Lisa and what some of the rest of them say about four cars and employees, and I don't want a welding shop, my neighbor to have a welding shop, you know, that'd kinda get a little bit aggravating. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Do we have anyone else who wishes to speak? If not, I'm gonna hear a motion to close the public hearing. All right, in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Unanimous. Now, if the, the board wishes to, uh, discuss this, I'll, and before, leave it to the board, I'm gonna say that I've heard a lot of, it's amazing what has been said tonight, so. I know myself, I don't have a, a vote on this, it's up to y'all to decide on this. I'm confused. So I think that this, I would like to see y'all discuss it, and then, you know, my feeling would be that I think that there needs to be, there needs to be a lot of loose ends tied up here. And to get to what Alan was saying, uh, it would be amazing right now, if you look around this town, about how many people do have businesses that they're at their, uh, I mean, I, I, I dare say there's, I couldn't even put a number on it, but it's not one or two.
But no one at tax rate, just because I said I.
Yeah, yeah. So anyway, so I think that we're, that there's all, that there's a, a bigger issue here than just simply deciding square footage and number of employees and parking, parking spots. So, uh, having said that, I'll leave it to the board to discuss.
If I may be recognized, Mr. Mayor?
Excuse me?
If I may be recognized?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I think when, the definition for me is when you look at what we're talking about here, home occupations, whose occupation? The resident that's living in that home. That person's occupation. It's not about bringing other people in as employees. When you bring other people in as employees, then you have a business where you have other people coming into the home. I think it's important to look at that, if you have two people who, in the home already who are working, and those people have vehicles, you're gonna have two or more vehicles already that are gonna be sitting in the parking lot. If you have two employees that are gonna be working there, that's two more employees' vehicles coming into that parking lot. We're talking anywhere from four to five vehicles already. If you have customers coming in, you're gonna have two, like somebody already alluded to, you know, you might have eight people within hours' time or what have you. That's a lot of vehicles coming into that area. I think that would, that, that would create major problems for me. I think when I look at it and I think about home occupations, to me, it is that person. If I wanted to start a business in my home, a home-based business, a home occupation that I'm doing solely, then that would apply no other people who are there who are working for me. If I got the money to bring in other people, I'm going to find a storefront somewhere.
That's a good point.
If I may, if I may, and I, and I don't want to get into the middle of your discussion, but I would say the staff's recommendation was zero employees. It was clear that it was residents of the home. This recommendation for two, and, and Josh did a lot of work to, uh, to, to get a, a, a survey of other cities, the vast majority, not the vast majority, the majority of those allowed zero employees outside the home. That was the staff recommendation. This is the planning board recommendation, as they, and, and because, and, and I think some of the board members had come to some of their meetings too, they met a few times and hashed this out, and so the two outside employees is, uh, and that doesn't, and, and from a staff perspective, it, it is what, that is what it is, but, but our recommendation was zero employees, and then it, and then it kinda, it was defined the way you just, you just defined it, and the way, and the way, uh, the way half the 60 cities that we surveyed defined it.
It would be my recommendation that this goes back to the planning board clarification, and that we look at, that if we're gonna say home occupation, it'd be zero employees outside of the home.
The only thing I would add, the only thing that I would add today is, you know, and, and that's, and that's fine, whatever your recommendation is, you don't need to refer it back to the planning board though to make the, to make the decision on it. You, you, I, I mean, they, not that they can't, not that they won't take direction that you, that you offer and, and, and bring you something back, we've done that in the past with other, with other issues, they've had to do that, but I, I would just remind you that procedurally, they have made, they have made their recommendation, and you all are free, you all to.
That's fine, so we could vote on it tonight.
Exactly. You can, you can, you can. Now, if you've got questions and you get, and you have concerns and you don't, and you're not comfortable with the language, we can, we can go back and do that. That, that's perfectly, perfectly fine. But I'm just saying, if you, if you make changes, you can, you can make, you can change this language and still approve it tonight, as, you know, that's your prerogative for that.
The one thing I would, the one thing I would add to the question about employees is to expand that definition just a bit, or add a parenthetical to include onsite independent contractors, because that has also been a, been an issue in, in the past. So we don't want to just use the word employee, employee.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna allow more than one, if you're gonna allow somebody outside the home.
If you're gonna allow zero, make sure that you're also specifying zero onsite independent contractors.
Well, I think the language for zero made it, was clear that it had to be the, the, it had to then be the residents of the home, but.
As long as it's clear.
Okay.
And it is already in the ordinance, it's not right here, that they have to live in, they have to reside in.
Yeah, can you speak to that, Josh?
No, there's not. If you have zero employees and you.
Can Josh speak to the owner occupancy?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, it, it is not anywhere in the ordinance that says that they have to live onsite. The way staff proposed it initially was zero outside employees, so that would be, um, well, zero outside employees, so anybody that was a resident of the home could work in the business. They didn't have to be the owner, they could be the renter of the home.
But it had, but if you have zero outside employees, only the, only the occupant of the home, there'd be nobody else to, to, to work there.
I think what Larry's worried about is the use of that word, employees.
Okay.
If they're not a statutory employee, they could be contract help, volunteer, whatever. I think the, the language Larry's looking for is, is nobody who resides outside the residence can work in the business, period.
That's good.
Okay.
Any other comments?
No, other than just that, you know, the home occupation is, is just that. If, if we don't make, make it very, very clear of, that it's a home occupation, we, you, and that the folks have to live in the dwelling, you, we're gonna have folks looking to move into, to residential neighborhoods and have businesses that they're not having to live in that neighborhood and community. I think the 25%, I think that's, that's pretty much a no-brainer. That, that, that constricts how much of the, uh, the home can be the, uh, the business. Now, there was something that said about 6,000 feet could be, I mean, 1,500 feet, I don't know if anybody wants to, to, to address that or not, but.
If you, if, if you have, if you say 25%.
Uh, Alan, y'all, come, come on up.
Maybe I shouldn't come. This has opened up some stuff. When you say 25%, and, and again, if you have a very, very large house, that can, that can be a pretty good size, uh, chunk, but if you was to say 25%, or I heard somebody in their comments, I believe, had said, or no more than, like 500 square feet or something like that. Because when you say 25% and you have a big house, that's bigger, I think somebody even said, that's bigger than some storefronts down there. Thank you.
Also, to keep in mind that if you, if you were to put an attached garage onto your house, it is part of the house.
Yes, I would.
I do think.
Walking down through their slam home today.
I, I do think, um, it, it is, it's my opinion, I'm, I am in favor of adding some qualification about square footage on the cap. I think that just helps us have a little better specificity to the.
Why don't, why don't we do, because I don't think we're gonna come to a consensus tonight, why don't we do a similar survey and just find out what the, what the most common? It's gonna be, it's gonna be probably around, I don't know, I'm, I'm, I don't want to guess a number, but it's gonna be, you know, 500 feet something like that.
Right, I would think so.
We're on a fear of maybe 22, 50, and 500.
Why don't, why don't we just do a brief survey and see what, and, and just get a consensus of what that is, so that we're just in line with that? It'd be 25% or I don't see.
Josh, have you?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, Josh, you do have that, you have to, could you please step up?
Here, we pass that down, don't we?
Well, it'd probably be good for you to address that.
I've numbered three times now. Let's see. 250, uh, Cheryl's right, 250 to 500 is probably the most common, at least out of this survey. Looks like the maximum is 1,000, and the least, the least is two, is 250.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm certainly in favor, I, I'm perfectly comfortable with the 500.
And then just a lot of them don't put a square footage to it, so.
So we'll, so we're gonna say 25% or 500 square feet, whichever's less?
Yeah.
Come right ahead.
Public hearing's got kinda loose, so.
Oh, well, it's closed, I hope so, man.
It is closed. But it's forced to.
All right, so we got to go ahead here, well, all right, I'm gonna go ahead and ask for a motion to open up, I mean, for the motion to, to pass the ordinance as it was presented, and then, once we get open, then you can make your changes if you wish, or vote it down, or delay it, whichever you choose. So I'd have a motion to adopt the proposed ordinance, oh, 14 dash 11. Not hearing one. Uh, I'm assuming then that's the board's wishes to send it back?
No. No, I make a motion. If that motion died, I'd make a motion.
Right.
That, that motion died for.
Well, no one, no one made a motion.
Exactly.
So, do I hear a motion regarding this issue?
I make a motion down on L, on the home occupations, that it be reworded to reflect the use may not employ persons who are not residents of the dwelling.
So basically, we, we, anyway, we're, we're, we're gonna be using the same order, just we're just changing the wording. Okay, who are not residents, okay?
So clarify Carlos's motion. Clarify Carlos's motion, if you would.
The use may not employ more than two people, uh, the, the, he says that they may not employ, who are not residents of the dwelling.
Right.
I fully agree. May I, I think that what you're getting at is that we'd like to suggest two revisions to the text of the ordinance, and then, will there be three? And then adopt, have a motion to adopt the ordinance as revised.
Yes.
So if you just hammer out what the three revisions are that we're suggesting, I think, L, I heard not have employees, um, not employ persons who are not residents of the dwelling.
And, 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 uh, that, to that portion, not employ any, and, and add, Ron, help with the wording, because I'm, I, I want to get at the independent contractor issue. And your wording was what, Ron?
Uh.
It was about working, I think.
Yeah, need to modify it so you get rid of the word employee was my concern.
You said no one who resides outside the residence may work in the business.
Inside, inside, inside the residence, yeah.
So I would, I would like for that, that's agreeable to you.
Is that what you want, Carlos? Okay. All right, that's the first. Anna?
No one who resides outside the residence may work in the business.
May work in the home, and that, and that what you're trying to get at? You're not one, you're not one to work, you don't, yeah, in the home, that's what you're trying to limit is, is people who work in the home.
And then if it's agreeable to Carlos, the other revision is, um, home occupation housed within the dwelling shall occupy no more than 25% of the total floor space, not to.
I don't, I don't think so. I think you need to make the revisions and then approve it at some point.
Not to exceed 500, not to exceed 500 square feet. Okay. P, a home occupation housed within the dwelling shall occupy no more than 25% of the total floor area of the dwelling, not to exceed 500 square feet.
All right, since, since we're basically coming up, we, we got some revisions here, what about N?
I'd like to change N to, I think that you ought to be able to have one truck or van or something that has your logo, your business name on it.
Yeah, because if you're, if you're installing carpet.
Yep.
You have to have a van to haul the carpet.
And, and you're, you're, you're leaving, you're, you're not installing carpet at, uh, at, at, in the home.
So that's not what this is referring to. This is referring to if you're a, you know, if you were, if you were a tax preparer and you had a sign on your, and, and then you had a tax-preparing vehicle, you know, that's, if you're, if you're, if you're installing carpet, you're not doing, like, you're not doing that at your house, so that's not your home occupation, you're, you're going somewhere else to do that. This is referring to home occupations which, where the, the operations of the business occur inside your home.
So this is not gonna, to interfere with anybody having an outside business carpet installer.
But I think the, the point that was made during the public hearing was that, that there, then you can have, you know, your neighbor could say, "Yes, I have a carpet installing business, so I have my carpet van, 'cause I go to the places and do it," where the home occupation would be limited to what they could have in there.
But what if they were storing the carpet in the garage?
It's not a, I would install it in your house.
That's not what?
There, it, the occupation is to take, the, the, the definition of the home occupation is that the principal business takes, takes place in the, in the home.
Yeah.
So you're looking at, you know, people that, that cut hair, design websites, that sort of, that's, that sort of thing.
But does that allow somebody to have 5,000-square-foot warehouse at their home? At their home?
No, you just listed 500.
That's right, you just said, we, I mean, not unless they have a, well, no, now, I was gonna say, not unless they have a 50,000-square-foot home, but, but no, not, not at all, no, because they don't have a, they have 500-square-foot limit on what they could, of their total square footage, that they can use for an occupation.
Right. So the way I'm understanding it from the board, we have in this ordinance here, we're still going with the, with the same three, N, number two is gonna remain the same. We revise L and P.
Correct.
Is there any other revisions?
Could I ask Anna to read the motion as it stands?
We don't have a motion yet, but the proposed revisions were to item L, which will say no one who resides outside the residence may work in the home, and item P, which will say home, um, that the home occupation will not occupy any more than 25% of the dwelling, uh, not to exceed 500 square feet. I'm gonna give the exact phrasing of that to the board.
Right, right.
And then the, the motion itself will be, I think, to adopt the ordinance as.
And then it'll have that language for, it'll, it'll have that language for L and P, instead of the language you see here.
Do I hear a motion to adopt the ordinance as amended? Do I hear a motion to adopt the ordinance as amended?
So, no.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Was unanimous? Now we need to get a motion for a statement of consistency.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Communication from staff?
Yes, I don't have anything.
Okay, Snee?
No.
All right. Communication from the mayor is, what about those war horses? Unbelievable, isn't it? I think the town ought to be equally proud of their school and their sports, as well as the new town square. Anybody else wish to say anything?
Dean, I just want to follow up on the ongoing pursuit of, as we're wrapping up everything with the town square, just where we are on reporting on town square finances to date and so forth. Not wrapping up this particular phase of the town square.
Yeah, I'm still putting together some of those records, I've gotten, they had two different bookkeepers, I've gotten two separate boxes, I'm still going through them, I think there's a couple items I requested today from John Dewitt, but I'm hoping to have it completed, you know, in the near future.
Very good, thank you, we've had some folks asking about that, so we just wanted to make sure, make the public know that Dean is closing in on it.
Yes.
Okay, we, so, excuse me, go ahead.
Like I said, today's town square dedication was a great thing, it looks great to stand up there and see all the improvements that have been made, and not see that big bare spot again. And I like to get people away from saying park, it's not a park, it's a square. And it's somewhere we can all go and sit and play in the water, well, all of us aren't going to go play in the water, but the kids can go play in the water and have a good time. It's also good to hear all the kudos that have been given to the people who had this as a vision, but I think we need to keep in mind that, like Alan alluded to, the city end that we had that day, and everybody came out and the place was overflowing, and three people made a decision. Three people went kind of against the grain, myself, Mayor Sobel, and all the women are brown at that time. And I think it was because of us stepping out there and making that decision and voting yes, that we took the bull by the horn, and we got some things done. That is something to be very proud of, whether it's from the people who saw the vision, or the people who made the vision come to fruition. It's our square, whether you are in favor of it or not, it's there, let's love it, let's play on it, let's do whatever we need to do on it. Alan, maintenance is going to be done, they have money set aside, they have money that's coming in that's going to help pay for the maintenance of the square. One of the things that this board has shown is that we're going to be very frugal in the delivery of money, how we spend on that square. But keep in mind that that square is ours, whether you voted for it or not, it is ours, and we should be proud of it.
Let me just clarify there, there is money being set up, set up and aside, but it's not the day-to-day maintenance that that money is for, it's the development and to maintain any major things, for example, has to be, they want to replant a particular garden with, or plant some additional trees, that'll come from the, as a motion from the town square steering committee, or town square committee, and, but the day-to-day maintenance is the town's responsibility, keeping the bathrooms in shape, mowing the yards, those are, it's our, it's our property, we're supposed to take care of it. The focus needs to be, and understood, that it's, that it's, any development of that property has to be done one, one way, and that's, they make the motion to the town, say we, the committee does, says we want to build X, Y, Z, or do X, Y, Z, it's going to cost X amount of money, if the town agrees, the town board of Alderman agrees, then we say, okay, we're going to do it, we'll pay for it, they reimburse us. There's already been some of that that's been done, but the day-to-day maintenance is not what they're money for, it's for the development and any major reconstruction of something that they need to do.
I have one other comment, Mr. Mayor, just back on the ordinance that we, the home occupation ordinance that we just passed, and I think in private discussions among Alderman, there was some discussion about moving from back to the staff recommendation, which Alderman showers supported and voiced earlier, to at least a compromise of one, and I'm perfectly comfortable with Alderman showers' recommendation for none, but it brings up the whole question of mixed-use zoning, which has come up before, and that's still something that we need to continue to consider. It just takes time, and we'll see how it works out, but that, I think, and we've discussed this, I know I've certainly discussed it with the town manager, these discussions about moving and making the home occupation text more liberal, it's addressing what you would be addressing if we have some parts of town where mixed-use zoning can come into play, and where folks can have a business and purchase a piece of property and live in it and have a business, because that's how it's owned.
Well, that's the way towns grow.
That's right.
I mean, that's the way the business district grows, as one generation goes ahead and raises their family, and then the kids don't want to have the house, then it becomes, so that some people may want to live there, but then some people may want, may wish to go ahead. But then again, that's something that can be brought up to the planning board in site-specific or street-specific areas.
Right, so it's just something to keep in mind, those who wished for a more liberal position on that, there are other ways to accomplish it, that I think a lot of us might feel maybe a little more, may protect the residential neighborhoods a little more, a little better than liberalizing the home occupation statute or text.
Anybody else?
I have one quick thing from the Land of Sky, and from one of the North Carolina chapter of the American Planning Association, they awarded five communities in the state, they made special recognition, and they gave out five, three of these were in the mountains, were some of our neighbors, and I'd like to point them out. Burnsville was awarded recognition for their town square, so I was thinking of that today when I sent them, hmm, we'll be next. And the other one was Hendersonville for their main street, and Morganton for their main, great main street. And the other two, like I said, three of these were in the mountains, two were in the Piedmont, Apex and Winston-Salem, and one on the coast for Wilson, and all those were main street. The only one in here for a town square was Burnsville, and I think most of us, but their town square's been there a long time. So anyway, that gives us something, I think, to look forward to, and just thought I'd share it with you.
It actually gives us credit.
If there's nothing else.
Yeah, right.
If there's nothing else, I hear a motion to go into closed session, discuss personnel. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.